First off, would you start the public sign up on consent calendar items? We have several tonight, and while the time is running on that, let me ask if there are any council members who desire to remove any item on the consent calendar. Councilmember Verda Olega.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull consent item 8C, the TRL. I just need a couple of questions from, I have a couple of questions from Veronica. Thank you.
Which one are you referring to?
HC.
C, C is in Charles?
C in Charles, yes.
Okay. HC will become 8.1. Councilmember Ariola.
Question carries unanimously.
Okay, we will now call 8. C, now 8.1. Madam Clerk, would you announce that item, please?
Adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 5.10 to the Vallejo Municipal Code relating to tobacco retail licensing and amending Chapters 7.68, 16.301, 16.340, and 16.701 relating to tobacco retailers and use permit requirements and repealing Chapter 7.69 relating to restrictions on accessibility of tobacco products.
Thank you. Debbie, would you start the public comment on that? 8.1, formerly 8. C. Councilmember Verda Olega, you requested this to be pulled. Did you have some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted clarification because earlier there was an email, I believe, sent by one of our, from the council. I'm not sure who it was. And then Veronica, was it you that provided the response to those questions?
It was.
So, because, you know, I must admit, I need more clarification. The clarification I need is what happens if we delete the seven years' limit for transferability? What does that, how does that impact the ordinance? And then also, I know that the goal for this ordinance is, again, it's a public health issue. We need to make sure that kids don't have access to tobacco and retailers follow the law, and if not, they are fined and that they're penalized. And the other goal is also to decrease the number of retailers and its proximity to daycare centers and schools. Okay? So, the goal is, I'm hoping that once this is implemented in the next, because they'll be given six months, right, to apply for the license and do all the training, that there will be, statistically, there will be at least maybe a 15%, 20% drop for those that will not comply or will not apply because they do not want to deal with the consequences of being fined. That's what I've heard. That could happen.
It could.
It could. And then maybe in the next five, 10 years, there will be only half, which is what we would like the city to be at in terms of the size of us, you know, population. So, that's one question. And then, let's see. No, that's my question, is the transferability. What happens? Because I know we were wobbling between 10 years, seven years, or 15 years.
Or not at all.
Or not at all, yes.
Or permanently, I guess, was the other option that was before us. So, to answer your question, I have to answer two questions. One, the ordinance has already been introduced. If you wish to make such a change now, we do not adopt the ordinance. We go back and take that language out and then reintroduce the ordinance and then re-adopt the ordinance. So, it will take essentially two more meetings to make any substantive changes to the ordinance that was passed, introduced by the council at your previous meeting. But to answer the specific question is, what happens if, so current retailers under the version of the ordinance that did not have the transfer exemption, if you want to call it that, again, it's not really a transfer exemption, but it is, let me see if I can explain it the easiest way possible. A current retailer who was legal when they established has an exemption in this ordinance to continue to operate at their present location and obtain a license notwithstanding the fact that the ordinance says you can't be at certain locations and you must meet certain density requirements. I'll call that numerosity. We only want 50, I have to look it up, a 50-whatever permits ultimately. So, anybody who's in business today has the opportunity, potentially, to get a license and continue in business the way they have been. In the original version of this ordinance, it did not allow that person to transfer to anyone other than a family member, as that is defined in the ordinance, if you will, and it wouldn't allow them to move locations at all, meaning as soon as they did that, they were out of business.
That was the original.
That was the original. Under the current ordinance and the changes that the council introduced, when you introduced the ordinance, right, we had those options you wanted to talk about for that, I think it's seven-year period until 2031, is that the right?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, okay. Until 2032, a retailer may transfer the business and the new operator would be eligible to be exempt from the same location and numerosity requirements that the current retailer is exempt from. So, after that date, no more transfer. At that point, they would have to comply with the ordinance and the buyer would either have to cease selling tobacco retail products or the buyer would have to, we'd have to be down below that 50 number so that there were new licenses to issue, then they could transfer, if you will. Does that make sense?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. We'll close the public speaker sign up list on 8.1. Are there any speakers on 8.1 from the public?
Mr. Mayor, there was one additional in person.
Okay. We'll call that person, please.
Thank you for giving me the time. Happy birthday, Councilmember Brinkenzer. I wanted to speak on the TRL topic. I think the council, although it was well-intended, I think made a strategic mistake by this. The reason is, is I'm representing a portion of the industry or the retailers. And as I said before, the portion that isn't here or is not engaged at all and has never been engaged, I believe are those that aren't the better actors. And the penalty system that you guys approved was three penalties in a year, which allows the bad actors to be a little bit bad, you know, for a period of time and then maybe get better and then bad again next year and get better. And then what you did also was that you put a limit by not grandfathering and not permanently allowing tobacco retailers who actually have value, the ones that are doing a good job, have value in their business. And that value can transfer because they're doing a good job, they don't have any fines, they haven't been suspended for tobacco or alcohol. Generally, when you go buy a business, you look at that. Has this business been suspended? Are they acting appropriately? Because if they're not, they're making sales through illegal means, and you don't pay for that business that makes sales in illegal means. So, what you guys have actually done is by not allowing it to be permanent, you're phasing out the good ones and then the ones that are penalizing things, you're kind of letting them ride because they don't care about selling because they don't have value. So, what I would encourage you to do is to think about that a little bit is, and I don't know what the process is or the steps are, and maybe this is already over, but I would encourage you, relook at that on the, what we've been mistakenly calling transferability as those are the businesses that are actually checking IDs, making sure people aren't, doing something they're not supposed to, buying in the right places, paying the taxes, doing the things that are right. And again, I've said this before, the majority of the retailers that we represent, which are a majority of the stores that are doing the right thing, are in agreement with the TRL. We've given in on everything, every single thing we've given in on. And guess what? When it came down to vote, we didn't get the one thing we wanted. And so, we're trying to help, we're in the industry, we know how this works, we don't want to see 100 retailers. We're good with it going down to 50 or 55 or whatever, but let the process do that. Every retailer has to go through the process, they have to get permits, and guess what? That 100-plus, many of them aren't going to even, on day one, in the first six months, are going to be gone. So, why not use the penalty system as a way to weed out the bad actors rather than just putting a broad brush on everybody? And then you weed out the good ones and not so much of the bad ones. So, my request is somehow, some way, if we can have this grandfathered or permanent approach for those that, you know, won't get tickets, won't get in trouble, let them run their business. This is a free market. If they're doing the right thing and they're selling in the right way, let them run their business and don't put a cap on it for five years or seven years or 10 years. That just doesn't make any sense. I think weed out the ones that aren't doing well and then get to your number, it's a 50. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any other, one more?
Mr. Mayor, there's one additional person in person. Balraj.
Yeah, I closed it, but he said there was already one more person.
There was a problem with the kiosk, so a couple of people had trouble signing in, so they're good now.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name is Balraj. I just don't want to repeat the same thing, but I agree with what David said. The seven years doesn't really make sense. You know, that was the one point we had on the ordinance and we couldn't even get that point. So, I think we should, you know, weed out the bad actors and people who have violations, they should be, have their license taken away, you know? But the people who, you know, who should be grandfathered in, who have businesses already for 20 years, 30 years, like my dad has had for over 25 years his business, so why are we forcing him to sell within seven years? It doesn't make sense. And I don't know why, like, I thought we decided on this already. I don't know why it's, like, I saw, I think the mayor posted it on Facebook, that they're trying to get rid of the penalty, change it from three to something less than that. So, I don't know why that's being changed. It kind of makes it seem like, you know, we spent a lot of time here, we stayed till 12 o'clock some days, and it kind of feels like we weren't being heard, you know? So, I just want to say that I agree with what David said, and I think the best way to do it is with the penalties. So, people who, you know, are the violators, they should be punished and they should have their licenses taken away, not the people who, you know, have been in business for a long time and doing it the right way. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sure. Now, Debbie, do we have anyone else at all?
We do have one person online that has raised their hand.
That's the last person, one?
This is the last one.
Okay. We'll call the last speaker, please.
Neff Neffer, go ahead, please.
Greetings, councilmember. I'm just here to send you my gratitude for listening to the youth that were there because this is affecting them. One of them started their last time by saying how vaping and tobacco is affecting the generation. And it's affecting a generation that will last for the rest of their life, so, in many ways. So, I want to thank all the councils that voted in favor of supporting and protecting the youth. In terms of the businesses, we do appreciate people that have been able to be a part of the community, and part of the community is also being able to help and support the youth. And it is my understanding that people will be able to sell their business if their business sells anything else, like their corner stores, they sell groceries and other things that, like, the license of the tobacco, maybe if it falls under the number that we are hoping to have, will be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That will conclude our, you're telling me there's one more?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we do have one in person.
It is just the last one?
This is the last one. He had signed up for the wrong item, so.
Go ahead.
Paul M., go ahead.
How's it going, everybody? I guess, thank you for letting us come back, and I agree with everything David Balraj said. I just came to say, again, we are at the same point of, we get no notice. It seems like every few weeks, we're just going to meet again to change something based on whoever pushes you guys the most, whoever's the most outspoken. If you look at it, there's no translators today from a macro view that just looks like we weren't considered at all a part of the process. And again, it was already voted upon, so I'm not sure what, like I said, every few weeks, we'll just be really loud and make whoever's on the council in a few weeks to come back. No translators, no notice, just where's the transparency, where's the notice? We didn't, we heard about it at 2:36 today from group text.
Okay, thank you for your comments, sir. We are now closed, we have now closed the speakers.
So, yes, I'm sorry. I, I'm, honestly, I don't, I'm a little confused, so I, let's describe what the process is. A city council considers an ordinance, and we had multiple public noticed hearings on this particular ordinance, but an ordinance is adopted by a two-step process. In the first instance, the ordinance is introduced on a public hearing with a notice, which we've already had, multiple of those. The last one, the council introduced the ordinance. At the second step, the ordinance is on the consent calendar. There is normally no discussion about that item. There is normally no changes to the ordinance at that time, and initiated by staff, at least, or by the council, as far as I know, there was no proposal to make changes. You know, I don't know what went out on social media, so I can't speak to that. I don't know what the rumors were that individuals heard about changes to the ordinance. We were asked to clarify a couple provisions, certainly by a council member who may have heard questions raised within the community. Now, if the council wants to change this ordinance substantively at this time, we start over again. So, I, you know, that's within the purview of the council, if they want to do that, just like it is in the purview of us later to make amendments to this ordinance. If the council adopts it tonight, it can have amendments made to it later. But as far as I know at this point, unless the council votes differently tonight to make an amendment, we, we, meaning the city, were not proposing to do anything with this ordinance, therefore, we were not anticipating there being a discussion, that's why it was on the consent calendar. Mr. Mayor, the one other thing I wanted to point out, because there may be some confusion about this, the, what everybody keeps calling the transferability provisions are not penalty provisions, they're just how you can lose your exemption, okay? There is a penalty provision in the ordinance. It is Section 130, and it addresses license suspensions and revocations for anyone who has a license at any time. So, what that means is those penalty provisions apply to grandfathered existing retailers that get a new license. They also will apply unless changed 10 years from now, when we might be issuing new licenses to new people for locations that comply with the ordinance. So, no matter who you are, the penalty section lives on and provides the penalties for, you know, one violation within five years, or one violation at any time, two within five, three within five, and four within five. And when you get to four in a five-year period, your license is permanently revoked. So, I just want to make, you know, there are penalties in this ordinance that apply to everyone. The extension of the grandfathering provisions was, I don't want to say, a subject of much debate among the council, and this was the version that garnered enough majority votes to pass, and I think I'll just leave it there.
Thank you very much. Chair has three speakers who are requesting to be recognized. I will remind the council that we spent well over three hours at the last hearing on this matter, so if you have new comments, they would be greatly appreciated. Chair recognizes Vice Mayor Loria Diaz.
Yes, I don't have many new comments. I just want to make clear that I was and am and will continue to be in favor of the removal of the seven years. I don't think there should be a cap on this. You know, we have people that have been working in their businesses forever, and this is their livelihood. I mentioned it before, this is a largely immigrant community that came here, poured their money, their time, their work, generational, you know, that sometimes these businesses get passed on to their kids, which I understand, it's already in the ordinance, but then also, nobody should have to sell their business ahead of time. It's like me retiring, and I mentioned this earlier, but there's a lot more folks here. When I retired for the county, I retired at the age of 50. I was ready and prepared to retire and took a cut in my retirement because that's what I wanted to do. The same thing with them. Those that are ready to sell can sell, but those that are not ready to sell should not have to obey an ordinance that pushes them into selling prior to the seven years because they cannot sell at a later time because of, you know, what's in the ordinance. So, I'm just going to keep it short and simple. I voted with them to allow no cap on the years, and that was my reasoning back then, and I continue to feel that way. I'm kind of surprised that it was brought forward because we had already, you know, talked about it, but I wanted to make clear where I stood and where I continue to stand.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Plouak.
Thank you, Mayor. I think similar to the Vice Mayor Loria Diaz, I think the reason this is coming up is because there still is some confusion that's going on about this. And I, like Vice Mayor Loria Diaz, I was also voted against it last time due to, number one, I think the penalties, when you talk about the three strikes penalty that was brought up, it's not penalizing the bad actors, it's giving them two opportunities to make them, before they even get recognized. And I think when the city attorney talked about the existing penalties that are taking up to five years, I think that is a valid one. Whether we want to wait till four strikes and you're out for, after five years, maybe that's something we want to revisit. But I agree with that waiting for three strikes in a year to, for them to lose their ability to sell the tobacco license when it's transferred, I think that's a point that we need to look at. I would look at two, at maximum, within a year period right there. I mean, I think one mistake and that's kind of like an oopsie, but if you're up to two years, two mistakes in a year when selling tobacco, I think that's a red flag right then in itself. So, I think that's a place that we could, we should be, in my mind, we should be looking at, and that's why I voted against passing this resolution the last time because of the two specific issues that we're bringing up today was not being able to penalize the true bad actors and the transferability to where we are penalizing the good actors that are actually following the law. And, once again, I think the misunderstanding was, people were under the impression that the tobacco license transferred with that. That is not the case. The transfer is only for the business, and the people that are getting transferred, the business being transferred, they still would have to apply for the tobacco license. So, the tobacco license is not part of the deal of getting transferred, it's just the business itself, just like any other business. That is, that is the way it should be. It's not the tobacco license that is getting transferred. So, if this is to move forward, I will still be voting against this to be passing.
Councilmember Brinkenzer.
I think we all know where I stand on this issue. I think it's unfair to compare a county job that has retirement baked into it as a comparison to a small business owner. And I also, frankly, I'm very concerned that we're voting on things that we have confusion on. I don't know where that comes from, but in my opinion, I think that, you know, we've discussed this, we had a majority of the council vote, and I think we should go ahead and adopt this tonight. We can always go back and do amendments. I agree, you know, I was a proponent of only having one strike and you're out, but I think that several council members wanted it to be less strict and very more lenient, and so here we are. Now, the confusion and the swirl is happening all over again, and I think it's the same two issues over and over again. So, I think the majority of the council has already spoken on this.
All right. I think that's enough discussion, and you can see the different viewpoints of the council, which is why we have a compromise piece of legislation before us. As far as terminating businesses goes, I can point out to you that as an attorney, the California State Supreme Court changed the law on a case, and as a result, my entire practice disappeared. I had to rebuild it from scratch, and that can happen simply because of a ruling. This at least gives people seven years to adjust to the situation and adopt accordingly, and future councils the ability to make any changes in it they so desire. So, we need a motion. Vice Mayor, did you wish to present a motion? Or do you not?
Well, I want to know if, I mean, Councilmember Verda Olega pulled the item, so I'm not sure if she would like to make a motion or what kind of motion she would like to make.
Councilmember Verda Olega.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. My motion, if it, but if I changed, if I take out the seven years, that would mean that we will need two meetings. Not that we start over, we will have to do two meetings. Please clarify.
We, so, if the council makes a determination that we need to, that you would like to amend this ordinance at this point, meaning not adopt it and direct us to go back and amend it, if that happens, because it will not be adopted, we will need to renotice the public hearing, number one, because it has zoning amendments in this ordinance. We will then have to, we won't have to go back to the planning commission because the zoning amendments aren't being changed, but the ordinance itself is being changed to public hearing. So, we would renotice that public hearing for a new introduction of the amended ordinance, and then we would have to have a second reading and adoption of that new amended ordinance. We probably do not have a time to do that, I don't know, I'll look this direction, on the 17th.
Seventeen is pretty full.
It's what?
The action calendar is pretty full on this 17th.
Well, and we also have to renotice it, so that's a different issue, and we would, so...
No, we would not have enough time.
We don't not, okay. So, we don't have enough time to do that on the 17th. So, we could do it on the 30th, at your special meeting, theoretically, okay? Not ideal, but legally, we could. Let me rephrase that, so. You can introduce it a special meeting, you can't adopt it a special meeting. That's irrelevant anyway because the first meeting in January is a regular meeting where the adoption would take place. So... We would probably also, staff is reminding me, we have put out a public hearing notice for the fees to establish the tobacco retail licensing fees. That would also probably be wise to continue. We are already continuing that to a date certain of the 17th. We might have to continue it to a different date certain, if that's what you want to do, so that it can get pushed over with the ordinance. So, is it feasible that this council could do it? Yes. But I guess that depends on the votes at that point, so I stand ready and willing to accept your direction, whatever that may be.
Thank you. Councilmember Verda Olega, did you wish to present a motion or not?
Yeah, I, you know, we are pressed for time here unfortunately, and I will go ahead, move to adopt this ordinance as presented because of, you know, I want something passed this year, and then the new council, and then the new council can make the amendments because we at least have to try it. And I wanted to, you know, reach out to the tobacco retailers that, you know, were trying to make something work here, and I regret that I will have to, you know, move the motion to pass this and then further discussion with the new council as this is now going to be, we need to implement it so that we can get rid of the bad actors. And the smoke shops is also an issue that we want to make sure we address, so, because if I, I don't think I'll get the votes if I were to not pass it tonight, if I were to not offer it tonight. So, I move that we adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 5.10 to the Vallejo Municipal Code relating to the tobacco retail licensing and amending Chapters 7.68, 16.301, 16.340, and 16.701 relating to tobacco retailers and use permit requirements and repealing Chapter 7.69 relating to restrictions on accessibility of tobacco products.
Thank you. Councilmember Paul Harris, did you have an alternate motion?
I didn't have an alternate motion, but a question, actually. So, like I mentioned a couple of times, it was mentioned we could do an amendment, but I mean, that whole process is the same thing, correct? As starting all over?
You may ask the presenter of the motion whether she views your amendment as a friendly amendment and whether she adopts, wishes to accept it as presented by you, or you may present an alternate motion, which do you wish to do?
No, I mean, like an amendment, like later on in the future.
Oh, you mean on the future?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Certainly, a council can always change an ordinance. Certainly. A council can always change an ordinance at any time they wish to do so.
Never mind. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's, the motion is on the floor then. Please vote on the screen accordingly.
I have one non-voting. So when the motion fails, with councilmembers begin, sir, Mayor McConnell and Verda Liga supporting.
Okay, since the motion has failed, that concludes 8.1, and we will move on to 8.2, which is formerly 8F, as in five.
Madam Clerk, would you please announce 9A?
Item 9A is hold a public hearing and adopt a resolution establishing fees for tobacco retail license program, and I do believe the city attorney wanted to address this item.
Miss Depp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The staff is recommending that we continue this item to, now, the staff recommendation originally was your regular city council meeting on December 17, 2024. In light of the item to, I'm not sure what we're doing with tobacco retail license ordinance, but we're not doing it on the 17th. So in light of that, I think we need to change our original recommendation to request that the council open the public hearing on this item and continue it to the city council's meeting on December 30, 2024 at 7:00 p.m.
You mean the TRL?
No, the, this is the TRL fees we're talking about right now. So there's no ordinance to have a fee on until you either, A, adopt the ordinance that was before you this evening, or B, introduce and then adopt the ordinance that, a different ordinance that has different provisions in it that would garner sufficient votes.
Well, I'll raise to a point of order.
Can I ask a point of order?
I got two of them now.
The council just denied the ordinance on its second reading. It failed.
So it automatically fails if you do not?
So does that, doesn't that mean, though, that somebody has to move to reconsider, and the motion to reconsider has to come from those people who voted in the majority?
In the majority.
Under our motion to reconsider?
To reconsider the adoption of this ordinance?
Yeah. Well, the one we just denied.
It'd have to be brought forward by?
Seems to me that.
Yes, which motion would have to happen at your next regular meeting of December 17?
No, the whole thing is done.
So let's.
Point of order, can we have a recess so that we can discuss this further? I think that everybody's confused, and I want to make sure that this is done properly.
If we discuss it, it's going to be discussed in public.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Right. So we're getting really wrapped around the axle. Okay. So we had, this is technically not about this item. Would you like me to go back to the previous item to explain? Okay.
No.
So at this point, we had councilmembers, four of you, who voted no to the adoption of the ordinance that was introduced at your last meeting. If that holds, then we have to go back and introduce and re-adopt. That is correct. A council member could, a council member on the prevailing side could ask to reconsider the no vote, and we could still adopt the ordinance that you already introduced. My concern is based on the questions that were asked by the councilmembers who voted no, that we're going to be right back in the boat we were in before because, sorry, it appears that one of the councilmembers who voted no may wish to, voted no in the first instance, but for different reasons than other councilmembers voted no. So we heard comments about reducing the number of violations that would remove the transferability exemption from three in a year to one or two in a year, which makes the ordinance more stringent on transferability. We had a councilmember comment on not wanting any restrictions on transfer, I keep using the word transferability, but we all know what I mean, on transferability. And frankly, I don't know what I'm drafting, if it's coming back. So, and I'm not sure it will garner enough votes either direction if we're still talking about the same two things we were talking about when we were, introduced the ordinance, and the no votes are no votes for the same two reasons from when we introduced the ordinance. As council is aware, when we introduced this ordinance, this ordinance was a compromise. You did not all universally believe in each of the items, but you each made a compromise vote. And I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just telling you, I think we're going to be, there's a real possibility we'll be in the same compromised position again after going through two more meetings. Now, that's not a problem. I think if that's what you want to do, we will do it. I will have to understand or bring back all of the options on those two issues again, and we'll go over them one more time because I don't know what else to do.
To my way of thinking, since the ordinance was defeated.
Yes.
Then 9A actually becomes moot. There is no fees to adopt because there's no ordinance in place.
That is correct, but I want to point out to the council, you have a very big grant that is for the, that has been awarded to this city for the enforcement and implementation of this ordinance. So, and you have taken action to accept that grant, which we will then have to also reverse and give the money back to the Department of Justice. So I, my apologies for, you know, going back into this issue. You can always kill it if you want to kill it to a certain death on the 30th, and that's what we'll do. And we can put this on the 30th, the fees on the 30th, and we can put the reintroduction of the ordinance on the 30th, and we can put the reversal and the declination of the grant funding on the 30th and be done with it if the council, if you do not have four votes to pass some version of this ordinance. Or you can decide whether you want to reintroduce an ordinance and go down the road of, I'm going to call it renegotiating with one another what the terms of that ordinance would be.
Okay. But the dilemma, the dilemma I have as a chair is a procedural one. Under our, under our rules of procedure, off the top of my head, I don't have my booklet here in front of me, a motion to reconsider must be made, one, by a person who voted in favor of the motion previously, and, two, it has to be done within a year, and I think, three, it has to be agendized to start with.
The motion to reconsider.
So unless we're directing that, the motion to be reconsidered, be placed on the 17th of December.
That is what would have to happen.
The discussion of 9A becomes moot, except for the purpose of listening to whatever public comments might wish to be made.
The question of whether or not, I would have to research this issue, whether or not your reconsideration applies to a substantially revised ordinance is a question of law. So I certainly can look at that issue, or I don't need to look at that issue, and I can just put the question of reconsideration on your agenda for the 17th, then you can decide what to do then.
All right. Well, let me propose this. We open the public hearing on 9A, hear whatever public comments people wish to make because it's on the agenda, and then we'll take a recess. You can check your resources, and I'll go grab my booklet from my office.
I can't do it that fast.
I can, I can get it out of my office real quick.
I'm sorry?
You can get it off of this office.
Yeah, I have a booklet on my desk that has the rules on it, and I'll go find the motion to reconsider.
Well, under Robert's rules, it's not quite that simple because it depends on what we're going to be reconsidering. And I don't even know that yet because I haven't drafted whatever, whatever ordinance is going to be, if it's going to be substantially different from this one.
Okay, well, help me out as chair here. Procedurally, I need to open 9A, hear public comments, and then hopefully.
Since the matter is being continued, you don't have to open it for public comment. You can open the hearing, close the hearing, and we can move on. But if you want to open it for public comment on the question of the TRL fees, you certainly are welcome to do that.
Okay, now, that's contrary to legal advice that a council in previous years has been given by a previous advisor.
Understood. Understood.
Okay, so you're saying that we don't have to take public comment?
Well, you would only be taking public comment on the continuation because that's all that's in front of you. You do not have the fee item itself in front of you.
What's before us is a resolution establishing fees for the tobacco retail licensing program, not a motion to reconsider.
It is not in your packet because the recommendation and the only action you have in front of you is for, to continue it to.
All right, well.
Another meeting.
Let's do it this way. Let's go ahead and call 9A. I think we already did that. I think it's public time. Where did Naveed go this time?
Yes, JR wants to speak.
May I have a question?
I'm just wondering what's going on in the back of the room.
The students are signing.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Ploulock.
Yes, the question I had, Mayor, and this is a hypothetical, the fact we've taken the action that we did on that, the TRL, you had mentioned an amendment that was potentially available to us. If we get this motion reconsidered, and at the next meeting, if an amendment is accepted and passed, then are we able to move forward? Because I think the fact, I think the big thing that we missed was the understanding of the grant money being tied to this. So the fact that that was not brought up, that's something that probably would have played, could have played a factor in how we moved this. But once again, throwing out a hypothetical to, if we had a modified reconsideration amendment to this, and that passed at the next meeting, are we able to move forward with the tobacco fees and accepting the grant?
I don't know how you can reconsider when it's already been finalized in the vote. That's my point. We have to look at our council procedural rules and find out what is permissible.
It's in front of me. It's fine.
Okay. You want to just read the motion reconsider to us?
I can. So Vallejo has its own rule of procedure relating to that motion that differs from Robert's Rules of Order, but I will read it. The motion to reconsider, a motion to reconsider any action taken by the council may be made at the time at the meeting such action was taken or at a recess session of that meeting. The motion may be made only by a councilmember who had previously voted with the prevailing side. A resolution or motion authorizing or relating to the approval of a contract may be reconsidered only prior to the actual execution of the contract. A question can be reconsidered only once during the meeting. Now, again.
I think it was just contradictory.
Yeah. Well, I'm reading you what it says. I didn't react it. This is in that lovely section two that we've talked very much about changing.
All right.
Okay. So let's, let's back up for a minute. Let's say someone on the prevailing side tonight wanted to make a motion to reconsider the adoption of the ordinance and wanted to have additional debate about what amendments you might want to make, which would still require reintroduction, et cetera, or maybe none of those motions pass. Let me point out one more thing that I think may be important or helpful to the council that I didn't stress with you previously, but I will stress with you now and see if that goes anywhere. If you adopt this ordinance this evening, as is, and then you want to change it, and you want us to put it back on for a modification, it literally ends up on the same timeline.
Okay.
Because your modification to the ordinance that you just adopted could be noticed for, and by the way, it doesn't have the same notice. It doesn't have to go back to the planning commission because that's not the section you want to change. So we can, if you want to modify it after your adoption, you can. This council can. You don't have to wait for the next council to do it if you want to, if you want to modify it.
All right.
The difference between the two things is, in the one instance, it would be in place, and in the other instance, it wouldn't be in place.
All right. Then the chair, the chair will recall 8F, language of the ordinance notwithstanding.
Why don't you take the motion to reconsider just for the heck of a?
Well, we have to recall 8F to start with.
Oh, yes, you do. That.
So that is recalled. Are there, is there any presentation on a motion to reconsider that anyone wishes to make? Councilmember, begin, sir.
No, I just have a clarification question. The main difference is that we will not have to forego and not accept the grant money for enforcement if we adopt the ordinance tonight. If we don't, then we would potentially lose the grant. That's the main difference.
Yeah, unless the amendment that you later do is to repeal the whole thing, that's correct.
All right. So is there anyone here from the majority voting block that wishes to make a motion? Vice Mayor.
Okay, so I have a question. If this passes today, you're saying it could be amended. Amended how soon?
Whenever you want.
Like at the 17th meeting?
Not at the 17th meeting because I can't notice it for that in time. It would still be a public hearing to introduce an amendment and adopt it. And to tell you the truth, there is insufficient time between now and when the meeting for the 17th gets published for us to do the work that would be necessary to bring any kind of an amendment before you. That's not possible. You could amend it on the 30th, yes. It's the same process. Doesn't matter. Modification is amendment.
Okay. Councilmember Ploulock.
Quick question. I guess going back to my original question was, if we, once we reconsidered, are we able to present an amendment today to get it fixed today in other books, or we have to do it at the next one? Okay. Thank you.
Well, to reconsider requires a motion from the majority block of those who voted in the four. So is there, if there's somebody who wishes to make that, I can't. I didn't.
I'd like to motion to reconsider, oh, God, what was that?
8F.
8F.
8C.
8C.
Can, yeah, can we go back to the screen for 8C, please? So, yes, your, your request is to reconsider the action on consent calendar item. It moved from 8C to 8.1, but, and then read the title.
Okay. So motion to reconsider 8C to 8.1, adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 5.10 to Vallejo Municipal Code relating to tobacco retail licensing and amending Chapters 7.68, 16.301, 16.340, and 16.701 relating to tobacco retailers and use permit requirements and repealing Chapter 7.69 relating to restrictions on accessibility of tobacco products.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Polaris. So this is a two-step vote. The first is to reconsider, followed by the actual consideration of the ordinance. So on the motion to reconsider only, please vote accordingly on the screen. motion to reconsider only, please vote accordingly on the screen.
Motion carries with councilmember Ariola and vice mayor opposed.
All right, so the motion to reconsider has been granted, now the motion to adopt the ordinance has been presented, so, chair will ask for the vote on that, on the screen, unless there's a substitute motion.
Somebody actually has to make the motion again.
Okay, councilmember Paul Maris.
Can you put that on the screen again, please? Motion to adopt, sorry, eight C, adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 5.10 to the Vallejo Municipal Code relating to tobacco retail licensing, and amending Chapters 7.68, 16.301, 16.340, and 16.701 relating to tobacco retailers and use permit requirements, and repealing Chapter 7.69 relating to restrictions on accessibility of tobacco products.
All right, this is for the second reading of the ordinance, please vote on the screen accordingly.
That motion carried with councilmember Ariola and the vice mayor opposed.
All right.
Before you move on to the next item, based on this discussion this evening, I am taking your discussion to be some direction to bring back some possible amendments to this ordinance on December 30. Is that, did, somebody tell me no if you don't agree with that?
I believe that is the intended direction of this council, at least.
Thank you.
Enough members on this council, or else it was important to them, yes.
All right.
So, that will conclude that, we will again back, return to the action calendar, we started the public sign-up clock a long time ago, we've announced nine A, so let's go ahead and have a presentation.
Nine A is the one that is being offered for continuation to your next regular meeting on December 30, 2024.
Okay.
If you want to take public comment on, you, you need to reopen this public hearing, because there is one.
All right, I will reopen the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers on nine A?
We do have one online, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I will close the further acceptance of speakers on nine A, and call that one speaker, please.
Ann C., go ahead, please.
Hi, counsel, it's Ann Carr. I'm glad that, while you seem to have some resolution about how to handle the tobacco retail licensing business, I do hope that the council and the city team, staff team, take the retailers' comments into account tonight. They seemed very reasonable in terms of the protection of business and kind of balancing the protection of well-established businesses that are being respectful versus penalizing businesses that are not respectful of the general concept, and it just kind of reminded me a little bit of some of the missteps that Vallejo made in what I call the marijuana wars, where, you know, we had broad, we had decided to issue licenses and collect taxes on dispensaries, and then some of the dispensaries were shut down, the police decided to use that same list to fight them, and then illegal dispensaries were operating without any impunity, and so, I just think we need to be careful and respectful, we say we're trying to be business-oriented, and I know that tobacco is a contentious issue, and it's not healthy. I have family members who died of emphysema, so I can understand that, but I, there has to be a balance between those vendors and those shop owners who have really tried to eke out a living and obey the rules versus the ones that are not, and so, I hope an amendment is made and accepted that protects the transferability of the businesses, and I'll just use that word. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. No further speakers, chair will move continuance of nine A to December 30, 2024. So, please vote on the motion first, December 30, 2024, don't get ahead of us. Please vote on the screen accordingly. Thank you very much, counsel, we'll take a 10-minute break until 8:56.